I want to say about this one.
Okay.
That's right. We're taking money from him. Yeah. The mines, the mines. Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
That's good.
Well, there he was just saying they were rescheduling.
Actually, I do got to make them. So I told you the chair is a key from. No, that's what I've been doing. Book is later. It's not for some. You can come say sorry just.
And when you do get up to the microphone, just make sure you identify yourself and then when you introduce.
Boy, you figure it out.
Yeah.
Just for, just for the audience, for review.
It's a lot of pressure on.
Just for the two people that watch us. Just kidding, just kidding.
I do watch you. About every time, but I do.
Right.
Well, let's get this, so let's get trouble on the road here. We got a retirement board meeting after this, and we certainly don't want to hold
Yes.
um, that up as, as much as I know all of us are, are enthused by, uh, stop reports.
Well, you are admitted. Yes.
I do like them. I do like them. I just, you know, um, you know, I, I, I like the, uh, lunch afterwards. It's my favorite part. But I will call this November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Lawrence County Board of Commissioners the order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. I was going to call on Dan to say the pledge, but then I realized we would create some confusion. No, I can remember it.
Oh, no, somebody cleaned up.
I don't have any down.
That's all right. That's okay.
Laura.
I got one. There were five here. Maybe you could take in charge here.
I have, I have some.
Oh, Vanessa has more. Thank you. Oh, I apologize for disrupt, disrupt. Thank you.
Roll up your roll up for basic.
Keep things in form.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Good.
All right, I'm asking you to call.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. We have a forum. Um, I will note, um, they're being live, figuring it out, being broadcast out to our YouTube channel, um, for public consumption. It's, we're also being recorded internally here for our purposes, compiled the minutes. Um, to that end, I'd ask anyone that has any business before the board, um, if you'd be able to approach that microphone, speak clearly into it, so we'll be able to pick that up on, uh, on our end. We're also reports and comments. I'm looking at the audience today. Not seeing any, any row officers or representatives, uh, thereof. Public comments. Um, before we, we jump into this, I, I will ask that if you have any public comment to provide to the board today, that it be mundane, a business that may come before the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Um, to that end, if you have any issue regarding a state road, for example, I'd ask you to contact your, your state representative or state senator, uh, or PennDOT, if you're feeling old. Um, if you have any issue relating to a police, police department or fire department, we'd ask you to contact your local municipality, whether that be your township supervisors, whether that be a borough council member, city council member. Uh, or if you have any federal issues, for example, if, if you have a, I don't know a bitch about the military, um, that's not us. That's, that is not us.
Right, right.
Um, but otherwise, uh, uh, county business that may come before Board of Commissioners is, uh, of course, uh, more than welcome. So that being said, I'll, I'll take any public comments at this time. Anybody have, anybody has it? Dan?
Yes.
Come on up, approach the bench. We're, we're, uh, it's up a little closer than we're used to this time, but that's all right. How you doing today?
Can I stand? Good.
Absolutely, you can stand. How are you? I'm doing well, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name's Dan Bailey, Vice President of Division Ministries, and I have my two colleagues here. This is Randy Crown, who is President of Division Ministries, and my colleague, also Vice President, Juan Creasi. And, uh, basically what we're here, uh, is actually to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, I think it was back in August, uh, the process for distributing the opioid settlement money was publicized. We just basically have a question. Where are we in that particular process and, and what's the timeline? Where's it going? If you can tell us.
Sure. Sure. So we've received the money, the money from the opioid settlement, well, first tranche of the money. We have a package. Uh, it's in county bank accounts right now. None of it's been utilized. We haven't distributed any of it yet. Um, I believe Laura, uh, as the Commissioner Representative to the Advisory Board we've created, is working on pulling together the first meeting of that advisory board. Um, at which point, any requests, any ideas, if, if you want to go before that board, you're certainly more than welcome to. Um, the goal of that is to get as much public input as possible before we start making those distributions. Uh, but I know, Laura, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add?
Yes. Just, just a little clarification. I, I believe at that time when we did have the meeting, we were, we were given information, preliminary information that we would receive. We were receiving six point four million dollars over the course of eighteen years. We were getting made, given an indication that the largest amounts of the monies would be given to us as the county the first couple of years to be able to utilize it as we need to. We were thinking of getting a million or so dollars in the first year. Unfortunately, that formula has changed, so we are rethinking some of the things. We had, we had a meeting before inviting a lot of the different area agencies, our own departments in to see just what a wish list would be for people that wanted to participate and wanted to come to us for monies. Now we have to rethink that because instead of getting a million and a half dollars this first year, I believe we got a little bit less than a half a million that we have to try to distribute and, and really formulate a plan so that we do the best that we can do with that money because it's a one-time thing. And we want to make sure we do the preventive work, the, the, um, you know, I say the reactive work, just get everybody involved to make sure that we, we do spend it correctly.
Thank you. Is Eric?
Like you, yes.
I'm sorry, is Eric the time? We have an application already to go.
Okay.
I'm sure.
And I'm just wondering if there, if there's a timeline, would there be a notification of when to submit those applications?
Yes. The meetings have to be public. There'll be a public notice put in the newspaper when the meeting is going to be, and they're open to the public, so you will get, you will have all the information that you need as far as, um, when to submit, when the meetings are, offering public comment on how you think they should be spent. All that'll be available. Yes.
That, I'll notice that that's more than we created. It's advisory and native.
Yes.
Yes. Final system does rest with Board of Commissioners, but we created that board specifically to, I, I'm not giving terms.
Subject matter, I think.
Exactly.
Yes, correct.
So I know, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm, you know, I'm one vote in terms of dispersing county dollars, um, you know, I'll be leaning heavily on what that advisory board says. And, uh, you know, I think by and large, we're going to, we're going to front those requests through that advisory board to then come before the board, um, you know, when we're going to sign purchase orders and stuff like that.
Understood. Thank you. Well, I'm Randy. Do you have any additional?
Uh, we're good.
My friends.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask this.
Well, let me add that if.
Thank you. Is that it?
Are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me add that, uh, this coming weekend, uh, two of us.
Yes.
Mr. Spielvogel and I will be attending the fall conference of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. It's being held down in Dauphin County.
Mm-hmm.
And as you would imagine, this issue is, is affects every county in the column of all sixty-seven.
Yes. Matter of fact, I have contacts in Butler County, and they're, I think today, they're, they're going through their applications.
Okay. Well, we have Sunday afternoon set aside. There are a number of breakout sessions to discuss this matter.
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll probably learn even more, uh, this coming Sunday at the conference.
Yes.
Well, that would be great. As you know, uh, things are getting tough out there, and that's why we, we worry because we're just losing some of the people.
Right.
And, uh, anything that we can do to help prevent that, that's what we're here for. So, thank you very much for, for the information for a little bit of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, absolutely. Always a pleasure. Yes.
Good to see you all.
Thank you, man.
I'll be coming down too. I just, I just won't. I'll be there a little bit late. Oh, you're, you're attending. Oh, cool. Okay. I am moving. Yeah.
Just got flying.
Well, I thought about that, but my, my issue is I have to go down to Atlanta on a Friday, Saturday, and so the, Dan, Laura, have you guys been driving out? You guys driving out Saturday?
Saturday.
Um, so I'm gonna, I'm touching down probably really early Sunday morning, and so I have to make a decision. If you drive through the night, you should be miserable for a couple hours on, uh, on Sunday morning, or you go back home, sleep, and then make the drive. So I'm weighing that right now.
And Butler, of course, has an edge. Um, I say it's an edge, but our, our friend, um, one of the county commissioners, Kevin Booth, was actually on the advisory committee for the state. So, in all honesty, we're waiting to see pretty much what happens on, on Sunday to get that information, to know the best way to spend that money because it is, it's, it's a one-time lift for us to be able to have that, and we, we do want to make sure that what money we, what we use it for has a long-lasting effect on our communities.
I would like to say something.
Sure.
Um, yeah, no, um, you know, we've been doing this for quite a while, and we've learned a lot of things. And what, what, it, what I have on my mind is that we do a lot of treatment, which is, which is good, and we need that. But we have to do better. We have to inform, we have to educate, and that's where we're going. We've gotten into schools. We go to the Shannick. Mohawk tomorrow, the Shannick Thursday, December sixth, New Wellington. We've been in Laurel, we've been in Shenango, we, we're bidding in Elwood next week. So, we have to get to the younger generation because they're very uneducated, and they're very, you know, they, they just, you know, follow, follow everybody else and pressure, peer pressure and all that.
Right.
So we're convinced that we have to educate. That is, to the next generation, we have to educate and treat at the same time, but education is very important. And that's where we lie. That's where we're at, and we're very, you know.
May I add to that, just a little bit, um, on the prevention education side of it, we, we have done some research and found out that, and this comes from Nida and Sam Shep, that for every dollar you spend in, in the schools on a preventive education side saves anywhere from four to eighteen dollars on the treatment side. And we have also learned that seventy-three percent, and this is a national study, of the students are not aware of the fentanyl crisis, which is just, it's evolved. Just within the last few months now, we have rainbow fentanyl, which is designed to attract young folks. It's made to look just like, just like candy. So, um, that's why we feel it's so important to get into the youth. They are the decision makers. They are the ones that will make a decision whether to partake, experiment, or not. Danger now, like when I was growing up, if you, if you took something or drank something, maybe you risked of becoming addicted, but with this, it's not even a chance of that. It's one time, and you might not wake up tomorrow. So that's why we feel it's so, it's such a urgent thing to do. And, uh, so we, we will continue to get into schools, and the ones we get into, we will offer them what's called a follow-up kit. And the follow-up kit is designed for the schools. It teaches the teachers how to present the information. And so that's how you keep it alive. A one-and-done assembly fades away, so you've got to keep the continuous education. But thanks again for it.
Excellent.
Well, anything?
I just had it, uh, being a parent of lost son to, to drugs. We do what we do because I don't want to see any more parents in our county, in our city, in our country, to have to feel this pain and live with this pain. It's imperative that we get to our children, that we get to our grandchildren. Kids, kids are our future. And I don't want to see any more kids be a number, be a statistic. We just ask for your help and expedite this as fast as you can because the longer we sit, every day we lose somebody. Lose on a hundred and fifty to two hundred people a day easily, just to fentanyl, and it doesn't include just the overdoses. So this is, um, something very personal to me. It's very personal to these gentlemen also. We do this at our own cost. For the last seven years, we've done this. We've fundraised, we've done everything. Whether we are, uh, blessed with a grant or not, we will continue to do this. We will continue to fight this fight because we know how important this is to our community. This is the number one problem in our community today. There is nothing else causing more deaths in our community than what this is causing. This is something that needs immediate action. This is something that needs a continued action. This isn't something we can go in just one time, do an assembly in a school and talk to these kids. We want to go, we want to set our program. We want to work with our community. Takes all of us. It takes all of us, and we just ask for your help. I know we have, I, I, I know all of you, and I know you guys care about our community. I know you care about us. So I, please, whatever we can do, let's do it because I don't see anymore. I don't want to see any more deaths. I don't want to see more parents have to live with this, this reality. So, thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I, I'll, almost tangentially, I have my phone sitting here. I, and the emails coming quite frequently, but the, the, one of the first emails off the top of my phone right now is Narcan distribution training.
Yes.
Uh, so, you know, i- it's, we get these things, we get these, this comes across our desks quite frequently. Um, you know, in other counties, other counties have more direct control over Drug and Alcohol Commission. They're, well, the EDs are appointed by the commissioners. Our county, I'm sure you guys, I'm probably better aware as I am. Um, i- is an independent board, um, independent organization. Some money flows from our mental health agency to that, uh, to the Drug and Alcohol Commission. But again, that's one of the reasons that we created that advisory board is we recognize that, that it's going to take a whole bunch of different peoples, all sitting around the table, to be able to solve the damn thing. You know, forever, uh, and, and you see other counties transitioning to what's called a human services model. We're at the baby steps of that. It's, it's, we, I mean, we, we, we barely started crawling, much less walking in terms of our, our planning processes, but, but forever, the systems have failed our populations because each system treats each individual as if they're part of a silo, right? So if you're a family, you've got an individual with mental health issues, well, they're a mental health case now. You've got an individual with, with drug and alcohol issues, they're a drug and alcohol case now. Versus, you know, because of mental health issues, that person might bleed into the drug and alcohol system, it might bleed into, um, the CYS system. They might, they might bleed into our homelessness systems. Uh, and one of the things that we're working towards, in fact, we're probably going to be announcing here a program, uh, within the next six months or so, uh, the capital outlays being done right now. Uh, but for the first time combining all, all of our human services agencies, big three of mental health, drug and alcohol, and, um, CYS. Um, but to start treating peoples, peoples, basically, going into the system. So we're moving in that direction, Lawrence County. It takes time. Government's slow, um, but we certainly appreciate you guys stepping up and all the work that you do, uh, to try to fill some of those gaps that, that our systems currently, currently see. Um, but thank you for coming in. Thank you for your time, and, and like we said, you guys are, whenever we have that first advisory board meeting, you know, I, I, I fully expect and anticipate you guys to be there, um, to, uh, to, to present your case to that board. So looking forward to hearing it.
Thank you. And that's good news, Commissioner, what you just said about bringing together, because there's, we're, we're talking this. These issues just are not in asylum.
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's, that's great news. Thank you again.
Thanks, guys. You're welcome to stick around for what I'm sure will be a invigorating public meeting where we're voting on about a hundred and fifty repository properties.
Well, if, if my wife hadn't given me some errands to run.
Honey, do less. Good for her.
Yeah, yeah. He doesn't do, you know, and I'm sorry, but she's top on that, on the list there.
Well, we forgive you then.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do we give? Appreciate you.
That's, that's why I'm, I'm so glad to take the title from us, right?
Oh, the dedication is.
All right, any additional public comment? Eric, come on up.
I guess I remember that. Um, is the, uh, canvassing have to take place for the election? Will we have to finalize the?
I mean, we don't have Tim with us today. This is the election board, um, so I don't know the answer to that. Tim would have to walk across the hallway and ask him.
The board of elections also.
Right now, we're the board of commissioners, Eric.
Okay, so I guess then I'm going to file a complaint about the, um, uh, border services office. Um, I did want to address this at the meeting, but if we're not going to talk about that, then, um, my complaint is, I, yesterday I drove, uh, an Amish person down here to verify her provisional vote, and Mr. D'Amani told me and her and Ella that he wasn't even going to deal with provisional votes until next week, and my understanding is that those need to be addressed within seven days. That the voter who used a provisional ballot at the ba, at the, uh, poll must come into the county within seven days to verify that they weren't who they said they were. Initially, he, he said that we're not going to deal with them. Then he said she was supposed to call the number on the, on the slip that she got, which is really frankly ridiculous. How does that verify a person despite a phone call? Um, and it wasn't until I took out my phone to record what was happening that Mr. D'Amani turned around and went to his office, got her provisional ballot, and said, oh, okay, easy peasy, we're a person. So that's just unacceptable, and I wonder how many other provisional ballots are not going to be counted now if they weren't counted yesterday. They should be part of the count, so that's my complaint.
I, I could.
And I would write that recorded for the minutes, please.
On that note, we'll move on to, Pat, you have anything?
Only one call for that.
Move on to fiscal contractual. We have a number of calls for a process. I asked Vanessa, uh, this time around, as opposed to, you know, we had some sprinkled and accepted, some sprinkled and rejected. Um, this way we'll just be able to go through, um, like for example, you know, one, two, thirteen.
All the accepted.
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha.
Exact, so we'll, we'll number these resolutions. Um, Vanessa, what's the, what's the first one here?
First one's going to be three sixty-five.
Three sixty-five. Next one's going to be, if there's any questions on any of them, I'm not going to read all of them. I'm just going to take them all in a batch. Uh, but if there's any questions on any of them, please stop while as we go through the number and process. So we have three sixty-five, three sixty-six, three sixty-seven, three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine, three seventy, three seventy-one.
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Oh, what one you got?
I have, I have, um, I don't know which one it is. I lost track. It's Mahoney Township. It says, it says two parcels, but there's no, there are no signatures.
Yeah, they, um.
Probably neither one.
The township nor the school district replied.
Look on the back of, I'm on three sixty-nine. If you look on the back of the resolution.
The next page, Laura. I looked over the back.
There you go. That tells you that neither.
Township nor the school.
Gotcha.
All right, so that's three. So we're on three seventy-one. This is, uh, Michael Lebenski, bit of six fifty-eight, Mr. Sir.
Okay, thank you.
Three seventy-two. Three seventy-three.
Bear, bear with me a minute now.
Yes.
Three seventy-two is the, uh, city of Newcastle, uh, Oddly Avenue, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And three seventy-three is going to be.
Also Oddly. That's two.
Okay.
Yes. Three seventy-four is Northview. Vanessa, please stop. We're going to hit the rejected.
Yep.
Three seventy-five is Northview. Three seventy-six is Northview. Three seventy-seven is Oak.
You can stop.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on resolutions three sixty-five and three seventy-seven? I'll note that all of these have been, um, either approved or not acted upon by their respective taxing bodies and municipalities and jurisdictions. If there are none, I will take a motion to approve three.
Sixty.
Sixty-five through three seventy-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, the rejected, and I'll note that each of these has been rejected by one or more of, of their respective taxing bodies. Three seventy-eight, three seventy-nine, three eighty, three eighty-one, three eighty-two. And that's it?
Okay.
I'll take a motion to approve these, and again, we'll vote, but, but however you want, but you've got to vote these down. Yeah, that's the process.
Okay, so we generally vote down all of them and then make the motion and then both of them.
Does it make the motion approve and everybody votes down?
Yes, like the usual process just calls them tougher to go. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
No.
Commissioner Vogel?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Motion's down.
Thank you. It's been rejected. Up next. No, I've tried to busy proposals and I've received a bit of proposals. We do have warrant registers. I'll note that we didn't meet la, uh, last week as the board of commissioners, and so to that end, we don't have, um, we, uh, we have an extra week's worth of, uh, warrant registers to approve. We have from the tenth to ninth to seventh and October thirty-first. Give my colleagues a minute, check those over. Take a motion to accept the warrant registers for now.
So moved.
You get faster than me today, Laura.
Well, you know, most, several of them are the usual, are, um, foster.
Right.
Uh, payments.
Right. Okay, I will second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Question, motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Same sign, motion carries. Up next, we have a minutes from November one. And again, I'll give my colleagues a minute, check those over, and take a motion to accept the file.
I, I have to add a little comment. I still think of the last meeting that we had when I said to Vanessa, I, I think you made a mistake this week. And now it's hard to believe that not only was it November first when we had our meeting, but we're halfway through. Right?
Ears come to a close.
Oh, right. Quickly, quickly, quickly. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Question on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Same sign, motion carries. We have one written communications today from Genon for the Newcastle Generating Station, Newcastle Power, Power Plant Westminster. Official notification, Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, that Newcastle Power LLC is renewing its facility-wide air quality Title V operating permit to continue operating Newcastle Generating Station located in Taylor Township, Lawrence County. So, if there's any questions, comments on that, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign, motion carries. Staff reports. You have a member of staff here, if we can report it, but I mean, it's already on the agenda. Seeing none. Commissioner reports and comments. Looks like I'm on deck first today. Still working our way through the budget. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to get that done by the time this board reconvenes two weeks from now. Um, but it's, uh, it's, it's going to be a rough one. I could, I could say that definitively. It's, it's going to be a rough one. Um, so we'll have to see where we can hear back. Dan?
I have nothing today. Thank you.
Laura.
I just wanted to, um, two things that, that, yes, the parade went very well on, uh, Saturday, the Veterans Day parade, very, very well attended as far as the, um, the floats, bands, uh, cheerleaders, dance lines, boy scouts, girl scouts, everybody was represented. It was, it was a, a, a very, very well-done event and well-attended. Also, um, in, I did not know that our friends were coming here today to speak of the, the Just One program that they are doing through Division Ministries. I am, um, on the board of our local single combat authority from an alcohol organization, and we were asked to do a, if we'd be willing to do a Narcan distribution. Um, and we, of course, readily agreed to that because, again, I know we're all here in this room, most definitely aware of the situation we find ourselves in, and want to do everything that we can as a board, as residents, as, uh, you know, concerned members of our community. We are having a Narcan distribution. Um, I don't know if you could see it here, but it'll be on the website. It is Thursday, um, from nine to twelve. We have posted throughout our building the different notices. It will be on our second floor, um, next to the, uh, the mailroom. I think we need to do that, get rid of the stigma of picking a, a, a case of it, a, a, a container up because you never know when you will be placed in that situation. You may be able to help a neighbor. You may be somewhere that, if it is in your vehicle, that you will be able to assist somebody with it. It's here, it's everywhere. Let's acknowledge it. Let's get rid of the stigma and do everything that we can to keep people from dying. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we're moving on to our new resolutions portion. Uh, first on deck, we have Pat Miko, uh, Director of JPO. We're a resolution three eighty-three on the submission of our annual writ and a contract for one hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Pat, how you doing?
Good.
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 For once someone asking for money, I'm coming and telling you I'm bringing money in, so that's a good sign.
We always like those.
Yeah. This is the annual juvenile probation services grant. We, we, uh, Vanessa reminded us, we were having the, I think it was a five-year agreement we got with a resolution. We need to put another resolution to be able to submit the grant application into, so, uh, one was drafted, we have one ready. And, uh, the grant age is one hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Pat, how you doing? And, uh, the grant aid is a hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars. And, uh, I can go, I can sit there and read you a page after page, I'm not going to, I think. Uh, Commissioner Vogler's been around, he's heard that multiple times. It, it's basically to offset, um, salaries, benefits, things like that for juvenile probation officers of the department, as well as any training, or any new extensions of programs, we, uh, uncovered under that. So, I'm losing my voice, which might not be a bad thing for some people, so, but, uh, that's pretty much it. Um, again, there's standards and conditions, we have to comply with them, we're audited every year to make sure that we're hitting those, and, um, we have yet to have a problem, so that means already on task, we've already been approved, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three law begins, it actually began July first of this year. Hopefully we get it by the end of the year, so it can, unless they credited last year's on this year's, I'll try to check the budget. We got last year's on this year, that we wanna wait to get any way to put it on, but, um, as a revenue, so. That's it.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
See how easy that is? When we're getting money, it's nice and easy, like. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, thank you.
Up next, three eighty-four. Um, this is just, our, our Wallace Road Bridge has been under PHMC, uh, limbo for the past, it's been before, before the board got sworn in. Uh, so, we finally, I think, come to a conclusion between our engineers and PennDOT and PHMC and us, um, to, uh, to allow them to alter the design of that bridge where it still fits the history and uniqueness of the bridge, um, but whereby it doesn't cost, you know, three million dollars to get it back up to, uh, up to what it used to be. So, uh, any, any questions on that, any comments?
Well, it's interesting that they ask us, PennDOT asks us for affirmation that we will own and maintain the bridge. We've been doing that since the late eighteen hundreds, when the bridge was first built. Um, so obviously, we will, we will continue to do so. I would ask, though, that for the purposes of specific record-keeping, if we could add somewhere in this resolution, maybe under the first whereas, perhaps afterward where it says Wallace Road Bridge, maybe in parentheses, what Little Beaver Township, so that we know precisely what municipality this bridge is located in. That's, that's the only thing I would request, otherwise I'm certainly, it's nice to see we are moving forward.
Vanessa, can you take care of that on the other side?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I might add that, uh, Bill Humphrey indicated me, right now there's a fourteen-ton weight limit on that bridge. He's saying with the new construction, there won't be no weight limit.
Oh, wow.
On that bridge, so, that's, that's good.
Excellent, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll take a motion, three forty-four.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have the appointment of Anna Baransfeld to the Workforce Investment Board, Board of Commissioners appoints, um, half the members of this board, Mercer appoints the other half, because we're part of the same, uh, uh, Workforce Development District. And, uh, Anna Baransfeld will be representing the business sector, um, for the next, uh, long term here. Through, uh, through the end of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, an expired term of, of Dave Pynt, taken from Pyrotechnic, though she's filling his, his slot.
Yeah.
Uh, questions, comments on that? I'll note that Anna works for the, uh, the, we'll prove. On that note, I'll take a motion for three fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, the, the budget amendment slash transfer portion of the agenda, it's getting bigger and bigger, as we get closer to the end of the year. Um, first on deck, we have a transfer of, um, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, it, it, it's not exactly a transfer, but it effectuates a, allow the transfer to happen. Um, from our demolition fund, the county's demolition fund account, to the redevelopment authority's demolition fund account. Uh, this is just adjusting our budget to allow those dollars to be dispersed. Questions on that?
No.
Three eighty-six, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Three eighty-seven, just transferring some money from our community development line item to Russo Maintenance and Repair, so getting through the end of the year. Take a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving some money from our community redevelopment fund to essential services land building rail and proventury land building rail to cover some mine expenses. Um, take a motion on that, three eighty-eight.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Three eighty-nine, moving some money from community redevelopment to commissioners, uh, major equipment, our poppy machine busted, we'll buy a new one. Um, I'll take a, uh, I'll take a motion on three eighty-nine.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, moving some money from town redevelopment to association dues, I, I thought I budgeted for that, but I guess we, we might have done some more associations this year, we had pastors, or maybe some dues went out. Um, moving some money from our NACO, National Association of County Dues. Um, that'd be three ninety, questions, comments on that?
Just, that figure is one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two, yeah, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Tried to.
Open the door.
Go through the wrong door, that's what we have sheriffs for.
Yes, and he's here.
Alright, throw, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Three ninety-one, moving some money from community redevelopment to black flag control, again, I thought we budgeted for this, but I, I, in fact, I know we budgeted for this, but I guess maybe when everything got sorted out, it didn't go into the right, thing. Uh, so I'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, uh, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, community redevelopment to liability insurance, this is gonna cover the increased cost of our liability insurance. Uh, when I got the numbers last year from, uh, Mr. Saliday, I guess they must have been off, um, by not an insignificant amount. So we're transferring some money over to cover our, uh, make sure that, if, uh, if someone slips and falls outside, our liability insurance covers the, uh, covers the cost. So I'll take a motion on three ninety-two.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, straight transfers, um, forty-five hundred from contract consultants to monitor equipment at a tax claim office to buy it safe. Um, proventuary, fifteen hundred dollars from a contend, their contingency to their materials and supplies. Uh, so next time Janet submits one of these, you make sure she submits the, the, the account names, whether, because sometimes I'm not gonna know what the numbers are.
I put it on the agenda for you, but I'm sorry.
Okay, I see, I didn't see it on the, I was looking at the, but yeah, and let's make sure we get a better description of the line item short. Um, planning, some contingency, some of their contingency, travel and training, um, against COVID goes down, conferences and, and in-person events go up. DA's office, Josh is just moving some money around to cover some miscellaneous, uh, overages in some of his accounts. Adult probation, moving some money from their contingency to, uh, travel and training, getting same things planning. MHDS, moving some money from their contingency to cover some increased electric costs. Corner, moving some money from its contingency to cover some software, increase software costs. Children and youth services, moving some foster care payments to JPO Institutional Purpose Service Agencies, JPO Institutional will cover, um, some institutional invoices. Uh, assessment, again, some more travel and training, Alan's going to via the Edri Conference, I guess we take that as assessment. Um, but moving a thousand from their contingency to travel and training. That, all, is our, our admin transfer. Any questions on this?
No.
No.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the admin transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on a motion, all in favor, please stand by by saying aye.
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 All opposed. Same sign. Hearing no opposition, passes. Uh, no warrants is on the table for the rest of the final action, there will not be a commissioner meeting next week, as we will all be in Harrisburg at CCAP. Uh, there will be a prison board meeting, uh.
There will not be.
All good.
Yes, um, I checked with the warden, and since he's gotten everything on his wish list, he's quite content, and, um.
He should be.
Yes. Things are, things are moving along, but, you know, the usual, I don't wanna make, paint it as a, as a perfect picture, but the, the individual things that happen and go on are certainly things that he can handle, we've got nothing extraordinary happening that we believe to have a being, so it's good to know that things are running, um, running well and.
Maybe next year we trim those down to quarterly, so.
I, I, I think that's a good idea, because I always call it emergencies when need be, but I, I, I think that is a very good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, there will not be a prison board meeting on, uh, November sixteenth, which is a good thing, someone will be in state tomorrow. Um, cornice will be, uh, at Forest West Close. Um, we will be closed on, uh, Thursday, November twenty-fourth, and Friday, November twenty-fifth, and observance of Thanksgiving. Um, and again, the next commissioner's meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, ten AM. Yeah, commissioner, yeah. Yeah?
Yes.
Public comments, any additional public comments, Matt?
I do.
Absolutely. Would you be able to approach the batch?
I can approach, no. Amy Lam Newcastle, I just happened to be in the building, and I wanted, I liked coming to meetings. I just wanted to say, I, I think I told them, I hadn't changed my name on my deed, just from Keshabera the Lamb. It has cost me three hundred dollars, plus, I have to reapply from Homestead Act, and I'm the same person that's lived there for forty-six years. I don't think the commissioners had anything to do with that, I just think that's ridiculous, um, to have to do all that. Because I'm the same person who paid all those taxes that year, and, um, and then I have one more comment, and it's not gossip. Um, in our churches, we always say church and state do not mix, should not crawl, cross through there, and the election is all over. And, um, on, on Saturday night, at one of our masses for Holy Spirit Parish, I won't say anymore about who or anything, but people, the priests started to talk about our morals and our faith, and a couple that have been left, um, because they thought it was, um, they thought it was a political humbling, and I thought, how ridiculous. And, um, so, because the election's over. So I just, and that, so these people who were prominent people are carrying this election over into mass, where before the election, they said churches and state don't, they have, they're supposed to be separated, so I thought that was, um, actually just ignorant. So, that's all.
Thank you.
And you're right, we don't have control over those costs, going back to your deed, and
Yeah.
And, the, a lot of the rules and regulations, it's unfortunate that, um, maybe people, they try to manipulate the system. You are an honest person, so you go in and do what you need to do. You know, there may be situations that that doesn't happen, but we're bound by the, the rules and regulations that we're told.
Well, I'm just glad I did, because, I mean, if I died and it went to someone else, I mean, they would have a hard time doing all that. So, I'm glad I did it, but, anyway, just a couple, couple comments I found interesting in our government. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Very good.
I have just one comment, um, just to remind the board that all special meetings, uh, the advertisement for which has to be approved at a public meeting before the special meeting.
We will follow the law as advised by the Lawrence County Solicitor.
The law.
As advised by the Lawrence County Solicitor. Who is an attorney. And on that note, I will adjourn the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Good news.
Alright, we've got your time.
Thank you, yes.
Uh, Debbie asked if you could save your pack before she's upstairs in that trial. Sure, uh, Vanessa, I'll.